Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty five. First on the agenda this evening is a discussion and direction on electric bikes and scooters on city trails and sidewalks. Mister Parks Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So here to discuss the electric bikes and scooters and really get direction on working on a clear policy for the community. And e-bikes have been a very growing in popularity. This has been something that's been ongoing throughout the summer with resident complaints from people either riding scooters, electric bikes, even dirt bikes, or things that are not appropriate for city trails or sidewalks. And so bringing forward those concerns, but also a lot of conflicts with pedestrians. We've been working as as a city on responding on those case by case situations. We've also pushed out communication through the in focus, through the Marion Messenger. We've also updated signage with the Walk Your Wheels campaign in the Uptown. We put temporary signs out. And then we also been working with law enforcement too on trying to catch those situations where are on that are inappropriate. There's two for e-bikes, there's three definitions, class one, class two, and class three. Essentially, for an e-bike or scooter, it's a pedal assist or up to twenty miles per hour. Class two and class three are going to be throttle assist or up to the higher miles per hour. What we're looking at, and this is something that is consistent with cities Cedar Rapids, so something we're trying to be consistent through the region, is permitting class one e-bikes and scooters or similar devices. So this would be up to that twenty miles per hour. This is really trying to provide that clear aspect in communication to residents that are asking what type of e-bike should we put on the trails? We want to be able to say class one. We would prohibit class two, class three, those things that are going to be higher higher miles per hour. Any dirt bike related items would be prohibited, but we want to make sure that we have classification for what should be on pedestrian trails and sidewalks when it comes to the e-bikes and scooters. It continue some of the education that we would continue with this. With direction, we would draft a policy that's clear in direction for that, but we would continue to work on permanent signage for motorized equipment beyond this point. We would educate city website, work on our social media communications, and also not just for law enforcement, but also empower park staff to stop people when they're not in for when they're not abiding by the rules. And just educating on what's what's allowable and what's not. So with council direction, if staff recommendations to go with the class one definition for an e-bike, we would come back with a policy language and ordinance for council review. This is something that we can implement as early as two thousand and twenty six season. In that time, we would continue to work on the public education and also come come forward with the communication piece as 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 part of that implementation. Any questions or direction on the?
I have a question. Does does the average person know the difference between as class one, class two, class three?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't that isn't that more blurring like causing blurring the lines kind of rather than having a clear, you know, no motorized vehicles, and it's clear to everybody, but like, or how are we gonna educate people on what the differences?
So we would educate them on the e-bike. So the e-bikes are the there's that's something that's gonna stick around. And so the the big thing with the e-bikes is pedal assist and then having the miles per hour. I mean, really, the things that we've seen in the communities, people have been asking on what type of e-bike to get. So this gives us clear direction on, hey, this is what you should be looking for. So if they're buying, if they're buying something, they should be able to find something that's should be under the class one. What we've also been seeing is though people that don't even have e-bikes that are taking dirt bikes out there, and we want to provide that clear direction that this is not, those are not permitted there. So something that is motorized, that doesn't isn't pedal assist, that isn't that's exceeding over twenty miles per hour are stuff that shouldn't be permitted on the trails, and that's what we want to make sure that.
Motorized but not pedal assist? What does that mean?
Pedal assist would mean that there's a pedal that they have to utilize, so it's not just throttle. Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. It just really class one, class two, class three, that's more of the technical side of things for staff that would go into the ordinance through the policies. I mean, with any education we would do, we would simplify it pictures and just try to make sure that it's as easily understood for the the general public as possible. But in terms of, you know, with with different vehicle types or, you know, just even early on and with the legislation with fireworks, there was different classes. So from the standpoint of how do we classify it for any sort of government governing documents we need to do? That's how we would categorize it, but we'd certainly tailor our our public public education campaign to simplify it and make it as easy as possible for our public.
Implementing these rules will improve the safety of pedestrians?
It provide a consistency and clarity as to because currently we do not have any policy on the e-bikes or motorized equipment, so.
So I mean, so I'm just trying to think of the people who are complaining.
Yeah.
Will they feel like this is taken care of, or they think, oh, my gosh, now now it's all legal?
Yeah. Well, it's it's gonna be like with with anything. I mean, it's it you're gonna have folks that are gonna may may not even know the rules or just simply not not care. But what it does allow us to do is better better educate. And then if we do, you know, the the police department has been pretty active this year on monitoring the trails. And if we have if we have an occurrence where we catch somebody in the act, at least we'll have the they'll we'll have the the laws in place to then actually carry out enforcement. And hopefully through through proactive enforcement like that, that's that will help alter the behavior.
I just have one more question, and I'll see what everyone else thinks, but how does this compare to what neighboring jurisdictions have? Because we do have a regional trail network.
Yeah, Cedar Rapids has the class one definition as far as what is allowable for their their trails trail system. So we were working on trying to be aligned with our.
Consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, that helps. Steve?
Can you go back to the slide where it defines the classes? There you go. So in class one, pedal assist up to twenty mile an hour. So are there e-bikes? So you do have e-bikes that look the same. So a class three e-bike can look the same as class one. Is that correct?
Yes, it yes.
Okay, so so the picture you had before this had a picture of an e-bike.
Yeah.
So that e-bike could either be class one or class three. If I'm driving by and observing it, if I'm a police officer or anybody else, I would never know that whether it's class one or class three.
Yeah, I mean, if you see it going extremely fast, you know, I would just take the caution of calling it in, because really, there should be a difference as far as motor that goes with those different bikes. That's a little bit more technical. Yeah.
But but from the outside, just observing it, I mean, e-bikes even going fifty twenty mile an hour seem to go pretty darn fast.
Yes.
So I mean, I understand something to go faster. So I I I don't know, I understand. I think I like the consistency aspect of it, and I hope we're even broader than that. I hope Cedar Rapids and Marion and Johnson County and Cedar County all kind of go in and because all those trails are all interconnected. When I talk to people, they're getting on a trail here and they're going clear in the Johnson County or up to Waterloo, whatever. So I hope there's consistency there as well, just between our our communities in the area. So I don't know, I think there's still a I understand what we're doing. I support it. I think there's still going to be ongoing challenges that I think are going to be difficult to enforce, just because I can't tell the difference between some of these e-bikes.
Well, the good.
Except when they're fast.
Yeah, if if someone's not providing great etiquette on the trails, the best case they could do is is call the police and have them deal with it.
So is there a so so if a policeman, if I'm a police officer and I stop somebody, and I thought they were going excessively fast, and I think it's a class three bike, is there something on the bike itself I can look at that bike and determine it's a class three?
So state Iowa state law does require that there's a stamp on the front of the bike that says the class of the bike.
There is, okay.
There is already that in place in Iowa law.
Okay.
So now whether manufacturers are doing that or not, I'm not many, there's manufacturers from all over that we don't.
Gotcha.
That is in the law already for the state.
But it's a state law?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that helps, I guess some.
Can that be part of the ordinance that it's labeled or?
Yeah.
Bike license though.
And really, what the ordinance is saying is if you can pedal it, then you can ride it. If you can't pedal it, if it's just like a throttle or anything else, and you can't ride on the trails. Kind of how and then if you can't.
That's a good way to simplify it.
Yeah.
But but again, to clarify, there are pedal bikes, pedal class three is a pedal assist bike. It just has a bigger motor on it.
Yeah.
That allows it to go faster. So it's still a pedal bike. It's just that mine is souped up.
Yeah, some of those bikes can go fifty sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, ridiculously fast. Yeah, okay. All right.
Great.
Thanks.
So I think differently about e-bikes because most of the people I see riding them are fifty two years and above, not twenty nine year olds. Okay, private joke here with our birthday person up up here. It's where I really have the greatest concern are the scooters. And they will go fast. There are some very high dollar models that will exceed any of these thresholds. But I worry I worry about the youthful energy that seems to come forth when kids are writing in a group. And I think that the momentary IQ of a large group of pre adolescents is an inverse relationship. It goes down and they do crazy things. I mean, I've been there. I remember me doing that. I I think that the discussion that we had at MPO Executive Committee was this is a universal problem across the entire area, in fact, probably across the state or the nation. And the the big thing I think is setting our ordinance, setting our enforcement posture for whatever seems logical, but to get very active through multi channels to have uniform messaging in the metro area about what the expectations are, whether it be on trail, side path, on street and marked bike lanes, and really disseminate that message through schools, through churches, through youth groups, however way we can, online, offline, you know, leaflet drops, aerial leaflet drops in the neighborhood, whatever. The point is, I I just don't know that anybody practically is thinking about what's the behavior that is is appropriate and helps lend itself to safety. So I really am I'm worried about scooters, but I really think a very vigorous cam communications campaign with our with our neighboring stakeholders is warranted.
Absolutely.
Um, and just to clarify, like, this discussion is about an ordinance specifically just about e-bikes and scooters, right? Like, because dirt dirt bikes, all that already banned from our trails, correct, and sidewalks?
Yes.
So with these talking about different classes, I feel like is there a possibility in the way that e-bikes work? Obviously, the pedal assist ones we're talking about allowing, right now, we're discussing allowing class one on trails, but not class two and class three. What in it can do class, but someone driving a class three pedal assist, you don't automatically go up to twenty eight miles per hour, right? Like, you could slow it down or no?
It depends on the bike.
Depends on the bike? Because my thinking is I feel like it gets just, and I understand the class thing is more of a technical term for the ordinance itself, and that's fine. But when it comes to the messaging and enforcement of the actual ordinance itself, once it would be in place, I feel like, you know, we don't necessarily on streets be like, this car model is not allowed, but this car is, it's just don't go faster than this. So if like we just had whatever that speed is for the trails, any bike that can go under that keep under that speed, just don't go over it. Otherwise, much harder to enforce too, because we're not.
So but so that's that's the direction that we're trying to seek here, because if if we do that, then we then we get out of alignment with our neighboring communities on that.
Is theirs working for them in the way that they want it to?
I I think this is as as Councilman Harper mentioned, this is a this is a regional thing. The we've been talking to the Lynn County Trails Association about it too, so this is not just unique to Marion.
Yeah, I understand. So my question still is, is this system working across the board? Or like, do people understand?
You know, I think that's in all honesty, I mean, we we've been working regionally, but it's also something very new. It's 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 so, you know, and we can come back from annual review as as we're looking at this at this, once we develop the policy and come back with the kind of that review process of how it's working. But I will say too, though, you know, this gives kind of the teeth for the enforcement so that they can enforce the rules. If people are being respectful on the trails, they're likely not to get called in. I mean, that's the big thing is.
And that makes, yeah, that that makes sense. I just want to make sure it's it's clear for folks using the trails and that that it makes it easy to be clear in the enforcement as well, at the end of the day.
Sarah?
Okay, I'm gonna actually get technical, which is not usually me. Usually, this is Grant, but so I would it it just happened that today on my social media feed, Eden Prairie Minnesota came up about they have a thing on no e-motos in Prairie Streets, Trails, or Sidewalks, which I think we're addressing that we don't allow them. Funny, though, because on my way to our three o'clock meeting today, coming up on sixth through the roundabout, right after I got past the Country Kitchen, I was met Mike, I'm in the car, but I met six kids on on these e-moto bikes riding the sidewalk down covered here. I mean, it was at least six of them. They just kept coming, and I was like, what in the world? They might have turned. I didn't get a chance to call, but I'm thinking this is exactly some of the problem we're still talking about. So I kind of agree with Gage on this. You can it's more about the speed at which people are traveling as much as the type of bike. But I also understand the enforcement side of it is tricky, because unless you catch them in the middle of it, it's got to be hard to be able to say, you know, I clocked you at this on the trail, right? Even though people have reported it, it can seem faster if you're walking. So I I understand the conundrum we're in on that, but I'll I'll tell you. I just happened to look this up on a side question, Gage. It says here that Iowa law says that riders must be fourteen to operate a class two e-bike and sixteen to operate a class e-bike, class three e-bike, and all riders under eighteen must have a helmet. So the state is trying to qualify, but again, how do you know if you're not gonna stop them, what they're going to be? Is this going to address, we're talking about e-bikes, but I also know that we have a proliferation. I've had them running past me multiple times on the trail with the scooters. So do they get lumped in with this too on speed, or we just ban them, or how did they fit into this?
The scooters will be lumped in into this policy, so if we're going with the class one, we'll have that defined as a class one.
And also, and this is gonna sound kind of harsh, but you know, you're trying to be out walking and enjoying the trails, and you see the families, and you're out enjoying a beautiful fall day, and all you hear is people screaming up behind you, even if twenty miles an hour is pretty fast. You know, left, left, and dinging bells. I would really like to remind our e-bike and other riders on the trail that they are the equivalent of a car on the road to themselves. And if you hit somebody, you are responsible, not the pedestrian in front of you, and yelling at them doesn't disqualify you from hitting them, you know, from being out of sorts. So I don't think we can be hard enough, and I think this is just going to get worse. And I I get where we're riding e-bikes on the trails, where people want to get there, and I know that people e-bikes are kind of overtaking the regular bike. But anytime you've, I I hate seeing anybody using any kind of motor whatsoever on the trails at all. Like, you're either pedaling it or you're not. And if you're not, if you're on a, if you had a motor on it, you're on the street. I don't know. So I appreciate trying to dig in this because I know there's not a great answer, but I think this, I mean, I'm okay with going harder than this on on some of this stuff, because I think it's getting way out of control.
And and some of that should also come with the communication plan on on talking about trail etiquette, because it is like Mister Harper said, it is for the active older adults that are gonna be on the e-bikes that really want to continue biking and need that assist.
And side note, let's say this at a public meeting, but I I've never ridden an e-bike before. And I rode one on vacation. We were in Athens, and it was raining, and they have cobblestone streets. And there are a lot, a lot, a lot of people, and there's a lot, a lot of hills, and there's a lot of cars that don't follow rules. And those things have some power. I mean, they they go fast. There's a lot of power between them, and there's a lot of this. It's a they're not easy to ride in that sense either, just because you you can click on that power pretty fast and they take off. So the more we can do on the safety side of it, the better, but it's getting kind of crazy. So I I agree with you, Gage, but I don't know how we how we can control it on the trails.
Will, and then back to Steve and then Gage again.
Most of what I was gonna say has been discussed, right? But I do have a couple of questions. So if I go into a bike shop to purchase an e-bike, the clerk working is gonna know what a class one, a class two, a class three. I mean, that's a universal term that's everywhere.
Those definitions are universal?
Definitions, that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we've kind of talked about scooters. So scooters are class like this also, one, two, and three? Because otherwise, we haven't really tou- touched on scooters whatsoever, because.
Yeah, scooters are a little different. I think by law, we by state laws, it I don't think it really quite fall into there, but they if we wrote the ordinance, it could fall under class two, because it's just a throttle, or there's no pedal with it at all. So but the state law really focuses just on e-bikes. E-bicycles is what they focus on. So the scooters are a little a little outside of that.
So are they just gonna be completely? What's the ordinance gonna say for scooters? That's where I'm confused at.
If it if it follows what we're suggesting, they would fall be prohibited.
Prohibited altogether.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve? Well, that was my question too about scooters, because I wanted to make sure according to what you're saying here, scooters would be classified as class two. And so we're saying scooters then would not be allowed on trails or sidewalks. Streets only. Is that what we're saying?
That is what we are asking. We're we're trying to get that information. What is the desire of the council so we can put that together? Because once we get the direction from council, we'll draft it, come back and present it back to council to get additional.
And that's where I would have the concern about scooters. The e-bikes have a heck of a lot more power. I mean, scooters have power, all right? Don't get me wrong, but like Grant's comment, a lot of the high percentage of the people using e-bikes are over a certain age and probably know a little bit better on what to do and how to do it. Higher percentage, much higher percentage of the people using scooters are younger kids.
Yeah.
All the way from eight to twenty some. I mean, my my daughter took the scooter when her car was in the shop from her house to school to she when she was teaching a couple of days this summer. So 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 scooters, the question is, if they're if you ban them from sidewalks, I would have a safety concern from that aspect with younger kids now being on the street with a scooter, which is going a lot faster than a regular pedal bike.
Yeah.
And that's a concern I would have with them, because a lot of times I would almost view them as potentially being safer on a sidewalk if something happens rather than being in on the street with car traffic. So I think we need to think through that aspect a little bit more and see what everybody else is doing. So that would be my concern about scooters.
I just have one question. It's not directly related to the trails and sidewalks piece, but I did have a couple of residents bring it up in a couple neighborhoods earlier this month or last month, and they were talking about how some e-bike users were in like a residential neighborhood and going kind of from like sidewalk to street, back to sidewalk to street. Is there like a law that applies already that prevents that in terms of like operating a vehicle that way? I mean, I understand like younger children are doing the same on their normal bikes. We all did that. I don't know. Maybe that's illegal too. I don't know. But when it comes to e-bikes, if they're getting up to over twenty miles per hour and they're doing that, is there a law that already applies to that scenario, or is that something you guys have gotten complaints about at City Hall directly too?
So typically, you would treat that as like a bicycle, and they would have to abide it. When they're on the street, they have to abide by every law that we have. So they couldn't go over like in a residential street twenty five miles an hour faster than that. But yeah, there's there's no nothing like hard said on if you can go back and forth with a bicycle. So nothing's the same way with the with the e-bike right now as well.
Okay, so I guess I just say that is something to be aware of overall as we're looking at like an ordinance of this, but I don't necessarily have a particular direction on that yet, because I don't know how big of an issue that would be.
Okay, go ahead.
I just spent a moment or two surveying the Segway scooter and e-bike site. Fascinating equipment out there. At some fascinating prices, by the way. I wonder if our perspective ought to be less about the equipment, class one, class two, class three, and more about the behavior. Because it's the behavior that diminishes the safety of any equipment being used. The behavior is directly observable. The behavior is what creates the challenge to pedestrians. I and I so I'm wondering, I I think really the be the behavior factor is is really the the preeminent criteria by which we have problems being created irrespective of the environment. Sarah, you mentioned the the flotilla of e-vehicle operators that you saw earlier this afternoon. I, you know, I've seen it many times, and it really comes down to are they operating responsibly? If I'm not operating responsibly as a as a car driver, and I'm in the vicinity of law enforcement, I would expect that I'm gonna get stopped. That's a behavior. It has nothing to do about the engine size or anything else. It's it's the behavior pattern. So I'm just wondering if there isn't a different tact that we take on this, but I would be okay starting our ordinance with basically as you have proposed, but continue to study this with our metropolitan community and see if there isn't something that we can do that really gets at the behavior profile, and that comes back to communication. So that's expectation.
Yeah.
I I think I just muddied the water, and thank you very much.
No, go ahead.
I don't think you muddied the water, because I was thinking the exact same thing that you just said, so it because someone could have a class three, and they could be going down the Grantwood Trail, and nobody's around. They could open it up. And but then they come across people and slow down. So I mean, it there's people out there that will use it correctly. It's the people that don't use it correctly. It's the behavior that needs to be addressed, not necessarily the equipment, but I just like what Grant said is potentially start here and then work forward on something, yes. I have another thing to say too, so, but go ahead.
Hey. In in that that the ordinances that we have in place are meant as the the backstop. Right? I mean, there are times that people are speeding. They're caught or somebody complains, and then it gives us the enforcement mechanism. So it's not, I I mean, that's that's what they are there for, is so that we can communicate out to the to public, hey, these are the rules. Obey the rules or or work within the confines. So you might have, as you said, you might have a class C, a class three, but if you are obeying the speed limit and you're not being reckless and you are. But if you are obeying the speed limit and you're not being reckless and you are, you're being mindful of others on, on the trailway. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get the calls. The police aren't gonna respond. Everybody's gonna be safe and sound. But if something were to happen where you are violating it and we are called, well, now we have the tool in order to enforce. Which is then meant to help alter that behavior. So, and, and I'm sure we have other, other instances of, of codes like this that exist. Where if people are not outwardly violating it and, and are, they're complying with the intent of it. Well, okay, but it's, it's when, if you do something um that causes damage. Um, I, I can't remember which council person mentioned, if you run into somebody and you hurt somebody. Well, then there's gonna be a response and there's gonna be an investigation and then there's gonna be a determination of what, what was violated and whatnot. And then citations or, or whatever would be issued, so.
Another question?
No, I was, oh, kinda gonna say what you just said, so.
Okay, so. Is there any?
I, I'm sure that I heard the direction to pursue with the class, class one. And we'll, we'll follow back up with a uh policy and also a communication plan as part of that.
And we will present that for discussion to get additional thoughts because it did generate a lot of conversation. We'll probably have some more.
Anybody who disagrees with that?
No, but I have a.
Okay, you still have another?
Well, I just maybe a request.
Go ahead, go back to Grant.
More, more just if there's any type of statistics that the chief could provide going forward of. You know, eh, eh, how much, how much of an issue you see, if there's tickets being written, that type of thing. Or um, just updates basically to council about what's being seen by the police department.
Yeah, we recently changed some of our call types to try to capture that a little better. So if we catch someone on the trail or get a call, then we're able to define that more. So yeah, we can pull that for you.
Great. Can, can the ordinance set forth in clear terms standards for behavior?
Yes, we do that in our, our park rules as well. So I would imagine that our trail rules would and should look similar to what our park rules are.
There you go. There, I think that's helpful. Okay. I vote for that add-on.
Yes, the, if I could, the only other thing I would add to this is that Grant mentioned this a little bit earlier about working with. Our MPO, uh, not only at the executive board, but at the policy board level. That then would assure that our metro groups are working together and that our language is very similar. I think that will really help. This is a good step. This is a good step forward. We've been working on different steps forward along, along the trail over the last couple of years. Uh, with the e-bikes just becoming a little bit more prevalent than what they used to be and at different age groups. I think it will be really important for MPO to be a part of this larger discussion.
Next is the discussion on brick streets.
Alright, so we, I did send out an email that was some of those background information. So a lot of these slides you guys have actually already seen. So unless there's, I want to talk about these slides, I'm gonna kinda skip most of the beginning ones of the background information. Cause we've gone over that. It, it has been a couple of months, but if there's a slide that you wanna particularly talk about, let me know. Otherwise, we'll kinda dive into the areas where you guys had questions to get those back to. Alright, so one of the first questions was Councilman Harper was asking, can we build vertical components with these? So these are a lot of pictures that Brooke Pouchery provided us prior to her departing and going, working for the state. So you can see there are vertical art pieces that you can build with um the bricks. Um, when we met with council subcommittee, this was not high on the list for things to do with the bricks. And then just wanted in the middle that Gavin Historic Bricks is actually located in Iowa City. Um, they're a company that actually buys old bricks and then repurposes them for different products. So just wanted to bring that up, that there is a local firm that does do things with the bricks, with patios and different things that's in there. Next, I did talk to the Iowa City Public Works Director at a conference. Um, as you may or may not know, in their downtown, they do have quite a few existing brick streets that are exposed. They do not have an official policy. Um, basically if they have brick that are exposed that are not covered with HMA, but you can actually see them today. They will pull those up, redo the street with a concrete base and then they'll put the brick back on top. But as soon as they've overlaid that street, they're done with the brick. So they just get disposed of when they reconstruct that street. So they don't have anything written in a policy. That's just their procedure of, of how they deal with brick streets. Um, some information that Brooke was able to get back when she was our Main Street Director of Beloit, Wisconsin. Um, they actually use theirs just as an accent along the curb side, two to three foot and then their medians. Um, Sack City has a brick design, um, but they don't have an ordinance put together yet. So they actually wanted more information on what others do at that time. Um, Manning actually were salvaging the brick. And then similar to what the bricks that'll be put in Central Corridor that aren't put there yet, is they were actually engraving them. And then um selling them and putting them out there. They're actually no longer doing that. And they actually, I believe we were selling ours for a hundred dollars a brick. Um, they were only selling theirs for fifty dollars a brick. So they ended up just starting to sell a dollar a brick for any residents that wanted them, just to kinda get rid of them. So those are what some other cities are doing, just for that background information. So what we looked at is where's kind of a happy medium, cause as you know, we looked at the huge amount of, of brick that's out there. And um, where do we stop? So we looked at this and doing these four blocks on Eleventh Street would cost approximately two million dollars. We wouldn't be able to do this in one year. We would have to do this in multiple stages. For example, we would come down here to Ninth Avenue. We would reconstruct that street. We would stockpile and salvage the brick. There'd be other streets. So it'd be a multi-year process to do that, to generate enough bricks with the bricks that we have. Just for context, we spend four point two five million dollars on our pavement preservation every year. So this project is two million dollars and that does not account for any of the underground utilities, so sanitary water or anything else. And these old parts of town don't have storm sewer, so we'd have to figure out where we type the storm sewer in. But that would come out of the storm water fund. So we wanted to just focus on the actual bricks. Um, it is about, if this was just to be reconstructed and put back as a regular concrete street versus a brick street. There is that difference in cost of about a hundred thousand dollars per block, just for reference. But with that, we have the preservation policy that we've previously presented. Um, but then what do we do with that salvage brick? Um, you know, if, if it's this idea that city council wants to lean towards, or we can go back and look through any of the other data. Or is there additional questions or data that I can provide you so you can make a more informed decision? Just looking for directions so that we can continue the discussion.
Okay, are you ready for questions? Questions?
Steve? Yeah, I, I gave Mike some, some comments earlier this week. And uh, based upon what we originally talked about, I said, I, I certainly am in favor of downsizing the scope. So getting it from what we were talking about earlier to four blocks is certainly better. On a longer term basis, that's still gonna take a heck of a lot of older brick streets when you tear those up. To get the bricks even to do four blocks, right?
Yeah, the good thing is on Eleventh Street, some of that is brick today. And so it being brick, we know that what kinda condition that is, is in versus the ones that are overlaid. I don't know what condition they're in until we take that asphalt off.
So, I mean, this is certainly a lot closer to what I think is reasonable based upon the, the added cost. That's still a concern to me from a taxpayer standpoint of, and, and all those old streets like that. The curbs are just falling apart. They look terrible. You drive down them. Uh, I mean, so from that standpoint, it's like in need of a lot of attention right now. So I don't know how long you can hold off on getting that done, but. So I think this is closer to me, longer term, I would even be acceptable to cutting it in less than four blocks. And using some of it for accent, for crosswalks uh and stuff like that. So I'd be amenable to that, even to reduce it a little bit further, just to reduce the overall cost impact on the taxpayers. To me, does it look good? Yes. Was I in favor of putting the old bricks back on. Uh, Tenth Street here between uh Sixth and Seventh Avenue. The answer there is absolutely yes. That got voted down. Uh, so I, yes, I'm in favor of doing something to some extent. So I think we're getting closer to what is an acceptable uh amount of brick usage.
Anybody else?
Great. So we have a historic district uh along Eleventh Street. Uh, that's bounded on uh the south by Ninth Avenue and on the north, Tenth. Uh, the west side of it is Eleventh Street and then it only partly goes through. Uh, it goes partially over to east of Twelfth Street. This is the Terrace Park Historic District. It's on the National Registry of Historical Places. Uh, long ago, this was a part of a substantial amount of work that was done by the community. To identify the historic uh nature of our community. So one of the things I think is interesting. This, this little um district is only a block long. And it seems like we have an opportunity. If, if our objective was to place sort of a highlight of this historic area. And the buildings, the homes that are there that are historic for their own reasons. If we were to highlight the significance of this as part of the deep history of Marion. And provide some high signage, so, some history markers. Uh, perhaps some incentives um where if a property is in. You know, terrible condition, maybe there's outside grants that could be acquired in order to help with some of the renovation. I think if it, we thought about it as a unified project of the street and the area and put a little bit of a spotlight on it. Um, I, I think that makes sense. But if all we were to do is repave Eleventh with bricks. That seems to be a rather um insufficient objective of what we're trying, would, we should be doing. So I, I really wonder, is it to draw attention to a historically significant area? Of Marion. And if that answer is yes, I think then the brick question kinda falls into place naturally.
So maybe if I understand you, Grant, what you're saying is you're good with Eleventh Street, but maybe not the blocks that we're showing. The block between Tenth and Ninth instead. That way it's in a historic neighborhood.
Yeah, I think there's a, the, by virtue of this being on the registry, I, I think there's a tie that that says. Well, gee, that ought to be the pri- priority segment for us.
But is that, that block's already paved over, right?
It is. Um, it doesn't mean that we don't do something else with the rest of the bricks, stockpile them. And then when that street is to the point where it needs reconstructed, we reconstruct and put bricks in it.
Okay, and more, there's a couple of questions probably slash comments. But how long, I know that this conversation's probably been going on since before I was on council to start. How long do you think this conversation has been going on overall?
So I know that there was an unwritten policy um that we were not allowed to do anything more with brick streets. Until we built more brick streets and that was kind of the Seventh Avenue. Um, I was not at the level I was then, so I don't know all the conversations that were had. But it was just kind of an unwritten policy. I don't know when that started.
Okay, cause, cause my, my thinking's kinda twofold. It's, you know, I, I like the idea of what Councilman Harper's talking about. Of making that actual historical significant block visibly historically significant. Um, because I also understand that this conversation's been going on for such a long time. And this street has just continued to get worse and become more of a frustration to those residents that, that live on it. And I drive down it quite a bit. Um, I have friends in that neighborhood. So I, I know how bad that street is. I drive on it probably three to four times a week realistically. And I just think it's, I'd like to be able to, to. Balance as much preservation as we can without um impacting. The total amount of time that that's gonna take and that's the hard thing to balance, right, for the whole project. But I also just think it's, you know, it goes with other themes kind of of that surrounding neighborhood too. I just think bigger picture, as much as we can allocate into things like pavement going forward. And sanitary sewer when we're talking about the storm and stormwater projects. And obviously we've talked about curbs specifically a couple of times. You know, I think we've done a lot of great projects over the last few years and we've gotten a lot done. And I think if I was the, the one decision maker in this city, I would say. Going forward for a certain amount of time, it'd be infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure only, um, especially in our older neighborhoods. So um, I don't know if that necessarily answers what I think about this specifically. But I just want this street really at the end of the day to be um. As fr- freshened to where it should be for those residents that have kinda been waiting for this conversation to kinda end over how many years?
Okay, Will?
Yeah, my ten years on council, I've, I've had multiple people though, I mean, from the start that have wanted something done with the Eleventh Street. Cause it is so bad. I mean, it's been, it's probably the worst street in town. I was go, I mean, I'm all for saving as much as we can. I mean, cause when the history's gone, it's gone forever and, and the brick streets are part of our history. And I would love to, I would love to save it all. Unfortunately, it's not possible. I came into this evening thinking, yes, let's do those four streets on Eleventh Street. That's what I, exactly what you're talking about, you know, take out the other bricks, salvage them and then do. Redo those streets and then do the Eleventh Street. But sitting here listening and thinking and, and looking at the picture. Uh, I do like the idea of the Terrace, I also wanna call it Terrace Hill, Terrace Glen. Terrace Park, ah, I don't know why I was, what's Terrace Hill? That was like a TV show or something. Anyway, yeah, the, yeah, um, I kinda like the idea of, yes, I know Eleventh. And at Ninth, between Ninth and Tenth has been, but asphalted over. But the Ninth Avenue area, which is in really bad shape right now. Maybe that strip going east-west could get redone and then stockpile what we can salvage out of the rest of the area. And eventually the rest of the historic district could, on Eleventh Street till, from Ninth to Tenth could be redone. That would kinda, that would give us a little section of bricks still. And it would be in the uptown. And then hopefully sooner than later, the rest of Eleventh can get redone. So that those residents that live there could have a nice even street and storm sewer and all that comes with a new street. So I think that might be my route that I'm going towards.
Yeah, do you have anything? But I guess from, from my perspective, it, it is true. We've been talking about this for, forever. And the, the conversation just keeps, it's circular and, you know, we, we go back and forth and everybody has different ideas. And I don't know if we're just approaching it backwards, like we're. I think I'll, maybe this is what Grant was saying, was like identify what area we want to showcase as, as. As our historic neighborhood and then talk about how. And then talk about how we use the brick, whether it's the streets or the sidewalks or. Decorative features or whatever it is, then talk about how do we use brick to showcase the history of that. Of that neighborhood. I I just spent a week, a long weekend in Boston about three weeks ago. And I I think, you know, this is a, this this requires long-term vision, you know? I've been in in historic cities in 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 all over Europe and. And I, you know, I'm sure at some point. They they had no idea that it was, there was gonna be just shoulder to shoulder people. Walking through those streets and walking through that area because they had the forethought to preserve the history. And we have this claim as the oldest existing town in Lynn County. We have that claim. We have, nobody else can say that. Like, how do we capitalize on that? How would we use that to drive our our growth, to drive our? Our uh economic development, to drive our trajectory, it should be part, it should be just part of the conversation is. And I'm really grateful that we now have historic preservation as a strategic priority. What does that mean? Uh, you know, we. It's it's a big step for us because, you know, a few years ago, we didn't. And I, you know, I didn't think that we really was kind of an afterthought historic preservation. So I I don't know if what I'm saying makes sense, but I I think. We need to see the benefit first of 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 historic preservation and then. Decide what area we're gonna, obviously uptown, great. We've, you know, the buildings have all been redone. We're, you know, we've invested in the infrastructure to 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 incent the. Building owners to, you know, keep the buildings uh safe and intact. And that that's great, certainly great. But you know, as far as the residential neighborhoods, you know. If we identified. That neighborhood and said, you know, this is where, these are the boundaries of this historic neighborhood that we want to make our. Our tourist attraction of the history of of Marion. And then. Then I think you come up with the ideas. I don't, I'm not sure it matters whether the street, the street is all brick or. But how do you use that brick to? Highlight the neighborhood. You know, it could be sidewalks, it could be decorative strips on the sides, it could be, it could be the driveways. It could be, you know, who knows, you know? Um, it's just sort of, because we we have, I'm sure you're getting frustrated. Because we've had these conversations over and over and over again and and we don't seem to come to a s- a s- A unified conclusion of, of you know, what the vision is. And maybe we need to come up with the vision and then see how the brick fits into it. Uh, you have something? Oh, no, you're looking at me. Okay.
No, I I I think that's the the the. Getting that clarity from the council.
Yeah.
Is is important. I mean, if, I mean, it, the one thing, Mayor, you said that has been repeated has been this historic neighborhood. I mean, if if we take that and we staff goes back and kind of looks at that and. Um, comes back to the council with a little bit more detail. I mean, I don't, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike about that specific proposal, but. You know, if that's, if that is the. Let's focus in on the historic, the historic neighborhood. We can look at the condition of the road. We can go ahead and start getting a little bit more specific so that we can provide a little bit more uh more of a concrete plan to council. Um, because we have, we have talked about, we've kind of narrowed it down to, hey, uh, yes, we're gonna preserve those bricks. Uh, it's it's now a policy, so when we go through and we know there are bricks there, we're gonna palletize those. Um, then it's just, what do we do with them? And we we have kind of narrowed it down to repaving the roads or doing the accents. So we've, we've narrowed it down to there. So if it's, if it's now, let's focus more on on this neighborhood. That that helps us kind of piece together something a little bit more concrete for you all.
Do we need help? I mean, is there, uh, you know, some sort of expert in this stuff that can, I I don't know, you know?
And and we've, we've, we've called and talked to a lot of the communities, Galena, Iowa City, a lot of those that that have have these bricks. Um, and and how have they done it and?
There's no known, known sort of expert in this area. I mean, so when we started this, I mean, I know this conversation was going on well before I was hired because it came up during the interview process, but um. Yeah, I, you know, I I I think a lot of us probably have been to historic, even just Galena, you know, like. The 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 forethought it it takes, you know, I mean, it's to to, it's easy to choose the practical alternative. And to say that, you know, just just, you know, let's just go with this because it's cheaper or whatever, but. You know, what are you losing for with that? What, you know, and and I think you have to identify the significance of the. Area first that you want to showcase and highlight. What is its significance and? And then, and then figure out how to best use the brick in the most effective way. That isn't, you know, uh, cost prohibitive uh to. To support what we're trying to do in terms of maintaining its historic integrity and. And and creating something that generations in the future would be. You know, uh, I don't know, you know, a place that people want to see and that and and. An example of, you know, what Marion was in the, back in the old days.
Yeah, so if I recall, the historic area you're talking about is Eleventh, Ninth, and I believe Twelfth. Maybe we could say that we want to do a U shape of that. We can verify that that's the limitations of it. I know the other one that we had talked about early on was Pucker Street, but we just fixed that concrete. So you're talking, I'll probably retire before that happens, but.
Yeah, but maybe there's ways brick can be used in other ways in on that street. Again, to enhance the historic aspect of it, right? It may not be the street because you, you know, it's it's too late for that. So I don't know if, you know, there's other ways. This is where I'm thinking like, you know, I'm not the expert. I just know how I feel when I'm in an area like that. And I think, wow, they've, it it's cool and they've done a great job with it, with preserving it. And look at all the people coming to experience that. I mean, I was just, I was one neighborhood after another in Boston, right, where people are just walking around, just taking pictures and. And it's just, they've created something of preserving their history. Now they have, you know, several hundred years of history. Uh, more than we do, but but still. In a couple hundred years, we'll be there, so.
So so there's, there's two things that have come out of this conversation that are are newer. Um, that I think will, that are, as I'm listening to the conversation, helpful. And that is, let's focus in on that historic district. Um, and as we've been having these conversations in the past, there's been the preference for. Let's look at repaving the roads or re- redeploying that. Uh, and it seems that just on the conversation that. We have a little bit more leeway to ex- to explore with the banding or the the striping, the the crosswalks and things like that, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a major step for me.
Yeah, so, so.
I'm not so married to the out, the whole street being brick. As long as the whole thing makes sense, like you walk, you walk into that area and you think, yes, you know, we've preserved the historic feel and look of it. And 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 it 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 shows it. Oh, sorry.
Well, no, I I'll defer to Councilman Jensen.
I'm sure you're finished first.
I I defer to Councilman Jensen because I just, whatever he's gonna say is gonna incorporate the feedback that we get. Because then we go back and do our work and come back to you.
So we'll go with Steve.
Well, yeah, I think one major thing we did tonight is narrow the scope of where we want to put the bricks. But I think one other aspect that we talked about before, uh, I would suggest we consider adopting Iowa City's policy. Uh, because before we were talking about trying to repalletize bricks under streets that have already been uh. Paved or asphalted over. And the percentage of bricks we can really recover from that uh was fairly low, seems to be pretty cost prohibitive. And if we really say the only bricks we're gonna consider is what we already have. Or what is sitting on top already, uh, not covered over. And that will already, I think, pretty much define how much we can do and where we can put it. So. I would suggest we consider adopting that Iowa City policy, then that's gonna really define. How much brick we're gonna have in the future to really work with and where we can put it, so.
Okay, and just for clarification, we have not adopted the policy yet because we wanted to wait until we knew what we're gonna use the brick for, so.
Policies.
True. So the brick preservation policy has not been adopted by city council yet.
But we, but we have been, but we have been following it. So if we're bidding out a project, if there's bricks, we're we're palletizing.
Will has another question or comment?
Comment is that if we do. Focus just on historic district of the rest of Eleventh Street. That has the old brick now should be top priority of what gets redone in the next few years. Because that road is, it's awful.
Right, so it's something where if we feel like we have good direction, we can direct um. Our engineers to start designing that to do just a regular concrete street. Palletizing that brick and then using that brick in the historic neighborhood then. And then that's exposed brick, it's not covered with HMA, and then we can figure out how much brick do we have, how far do we think we can take it? And then we can kind of figure out, okay, is it curb to curb or is it something, an accent piece or something else to help? Yeah.
Well, maybe it's the crosswalks. I mean, it could even be on, can't we do that with, if you redesign Eleventh Street as a, as a concrete street? Can it, can the crosswalks be?
Yeah, I would just recommend not having the the actual crosswalk be the brick just because when they start moving. They get out of ADA compliance and then we get into trouble there. It's a lot of maintenance. So if we do the banding at least, they can be out of whack a little bit. And then the concrete stays.
Some decorative feature on the intersection.
Uh, yeah, the banding, so the banding would reflect, would be, would take the place of the white stripes showing where the crosswalk's at.
Okay. Yeah, I mean. Have we made progress?
Yes.
Okay. Brick, break, break, but it is important and, you know, I mean, I I, yeah, go ahead.
Um, question about just the historic block and this is. More just like ignorance question on this, but do any of those, do any of the, do we know like? The stories of like the houses on that block? We do, okay, because I was wondering. Like what's the, like our historic preservation board's role in all of this going forward? And I feel like they should be. Helping or whatever, they should have some sort of project with this going forward, right, correct? I don't know what that project is.
Yeah.
But some, something.
Well, yeah, I don't think there is, up until this point, they're very active or that they've been utilized, I think, to the full. Potential of that, of that board. Um, I think we, you know, there's more they could be doing.
And I feel like any. Extra research or conversations they have would. Help us get to the point of knowing what we're gonna do with that specific block, but yeah, I'm for modernizing those. Force trips and just getting work done.
The one caveat I have and the concern I have is that we're gonna. Push forward and um. Do the concrete street, we're gonna palletize the bricks and then nothing's gonna happen with them. Like I, we should, we should concurrently be working on a plan of how we're gonna use the palletized bricks. So that we can say to people, to the community and to ourselves, we have a plan. And this, we're not just removing the historical brick. Uh, but we have a plan of how we're gonna be using it, not just like gonna put it in a warehouse. Hoping to use it or hoping to get the funds to use it someday because, you know, with the competing priorities ever growing. And the funding ever shrinking, you know, it's gonna be harder and harder to come up with. You know, a project that that or funding for a project like that because there's always gonna be something more important or more more pressing. So I just want to get a plan that we can say, this is our plan.
And that is, that is the exact point of these discussions, so we can get the clarity so we can put the, put all those plans together.
Anybody disagree with what I said? So just so it's not just me, anybody disagree?
And what we could do is even in the present, brick preservation policy, we could say the. The direction is to put them in the old neighborhood in a way to be determined at a future date too. So we could put it in the brick preservation policies unless you knew exactly what you wanted to do, but you could say.
I think we should be working on the plan and then maybe that's how we involve, we get our historic preservation committee in- involved. Um, I mean, that's my fear is we could, we'll say we plan to use them and they're gonna sit in a warehouse. And we won't use them because we're never gonna be have the luxury of saying, oh, here's all this extra money to.
I can tell you they're sitting in our lot, making up a space that we need.
We, we have, Mayor, Mayor, to your point, Mayor, we understand. This helps us. Uh, Mike and his staff work on the the roads around there anyway. So we can identify which roads are gonna need to be repaired within the historic district and we can start incorporating those. You know, do we do the banding and stuff? So we can start, this helps to get to that point, so. We're gonna, staff's gonna start working on this stuff starting tomorrow.
Yeah, and so the next set of council meetings, if you guys are ready, we could bring back the the brick preservation policy to make it an official policy. Um, and then we can talk about whether it's the the bricks that are covered with HMA or not, if everyone agrees with Steve or not. And if we want to add some kind of words in there to say what, you know, what they're gonna be used for in the historic neighborhood. You know, for something to be determined at a later date, we can engage HPC to figure out what they have for ideas. Um, because before I think it was more focused on just in the street.
Go ahead, Will.
Just sitting here listening to you makes me wonder, is the policy, is a brick policy as important as? Staff, not necessarily just working on the policy, but we're instead working and spending the time on what we were just talking about of of what we can be doing with those streets in that area. Do we have to have that policy or is that just, is that a time just to do or?
We're gonna want to formalize it. I mean, it's it's crafted already. We have it. We've, I mean, it's it's, and and we've been, we've been, what we've been doing is palletizing them anyway. I mean, so we've been doing what it is, but we'd like to have, I mean, one of the comments from the council when we were having this conversation a long time ago. Was we need to make sure that we're setting it up so that those that follow us are aware of what what we are doing to. To work towards and strive towards that strategic plan goal, the historic preservation. So that's, that's the importance of the policy, but it's, it's done.
Yeah, I just.
Yep.
Because once we have this done right here, there's no more brick. That's it, it's right there.
Correct.
So. When that's figured out, then. Don't really need a brick policy anymore.
Yeah, those are the, these are the streets that, the blue lines are the streets that are exposed brick to, yeah.
So, okay, it's already done, never mind.
Anything else, Mike? Thank you. Next item is the. Review of the agenda is one item that's marked for discussion. Leanne?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to call out that we're gonna be setting a date of meeting to approve a tax increment finance agreement with Esco Electric Company. This is for construction of an office and prefabrication and logistics warehouse located at sixty-two sixty North Gateway Drive. The incentive being offered as part of this development agreement is a twelve-year, one hundred percent rebate with a not to exceed of two point five million. And the developer has agreed to a minimum assessment of seven point six million with construction completed by December thirty-first twenty-six. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Um, anyone else else have questions on anything on the agenda that's not marked? Okay, thank you for joining us. The meeting's adjourned.